Well, welcome everybody. I appreciate you being here. A lot of new faces in the crowd tonight. So welcome and we're going to get started. Notice is hereby given pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Vernon's annotated civil statute, Article 625217 that the city of Smithville will conduct a council meeting and public hearing on April 14th, 2025 at 6:00 PM at the City Hall located at 317 Main Street, Smithville, Texas. I call this meeting to order. Our invocation will be led by Pastor Mike Murphy.
All right, it's on. Let's pray. Father, what a privilege it is to approach your throne, knowing God your Creator, God your all-knowing and all-capable. Father, today you can do anything. Father, we thank you that that you're with us wherever and whatever we experience in life. God, we want you to know we want to think about you first, not a second thought. Father, tonight we thank you for our council and their hours that they volunteer and God we pray you bless them, give them wisdom, direction. Thank you for our mayor, God all our city employees and God we thank you for Smithville, beautiful town we get to live in. Father, we got something special here and God we just pray that you just grant us wisdom, direction to keep it that way. Well, we love you tonight. Thank you for the way you look out and take care of us. We're going to continue to lean on you. Thank you, Lord, for your blessings. For it's in your name we pray. Amen.
We will move on to the proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunication Week. Councilman Jenkins, will you please lead it?
Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, and emergency medical services and whereas when an emergency occurs, the proper proper response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Smithville Emergency Communications Center and whereas the public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services and whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety and whereas public safety telecommunications of the city of Smithville had contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their jobs in the past year. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of Smithville, Texas, declare the week of April 13th through 19th, 2025 to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Smithville in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and our citizens safe.
Now for there, yeah, yeah, yeah. I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Smithville to be affixed to the 14th day of April, 2025. Thank you. Thank you for all your telecommunications. They do a great job. And we'll present that to them this week. Next item is Earth Day and Keep Smithville Beautiful. Councilman Jameson, will you lead us, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the international community has celebrated Earth Day each year on April 22nd since 1970 to demonstrate support for environmental protection and whereas earthday.org is coordinating a wide range of global events connected to the theme for Earth Day 2025 is "Our Power, Our Planet," inviting everyone around the globe to unite behind renewable energy and to triple the global generation of clean electricity by 2030. And whereas the many volunteers associated with Keep Smithville Beautiful coordinate a number of events and activities that support Earth Day each every day and whereas Keep Smithville Beautiful was a leading partner in establishing the Smithville Recycling Center in 1984 together with the Methodist men, the Boy Scouts, and the city of Smithville and has worked on innumerable other projects, including planting trees, purchasing and painting benches, purchasing lampposts for Main Street and Spring and Fall Street and river sweeps. And whereas former Smithville Mayor Renee Blaschke was a founding member of Keep Texas Beautiful and together with other dedicated volunteers, established Keep Smithville Beautiful as a Keep Texas Beautiful affiliate in 1988 and in 1998 established Keep Smithville Beautiful as a standing committee with the Smithville Area Chamber of Commerce. And whereas Keep Smithville Beautiful has been a member in good standing with Keep Texas Beautiful since 1988, having achieved the silver level since 2023. And whereas Keep Smithville Beautiful became a 501(c)(3) nonprofit in 2018 so that it would be eligible to receive grants for beautification and sustainability projects. And whereas in 2024, volunteers with Keep Smithville Beautiful logged 903 hours at a value of $30,241, supporting programs such as the Super Sweep litter cleanups and Spring and Fall, the Sustainable Home and Garden Event in October, the Three Household Hazardous Waste Events, a bike repair event, and coordinating the Smithville mural on the pavilion floor with funds from a union specific grant and assistance from the city of Smithville. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of Smithville, do hereby recognize and declare April 22nd, 2025 to be Earth Day and Keep Smithville Beautiful Appreciation Day.
And witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Smithville to be affixed this 14th day of April, 2025. Are they here? Is Keep Smithville Beautiful here? Come on down. Thank you. Thank you. They did just do a nine-mile cleanup. I need to go hike nine miles. All right. Our next item is a proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Kathy, Councilman Meeks, will you please lead us?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. April marks Sexual Assault Awareness Month, a time to bring attention to the widespread issue of sexual violence and empower communities to take action. This year's theme, Together We Act, United We Change, highlights the power of working together to create safer, more respectful environments for all. Sexual abuse, assault, and harassment affect individuals of every background. To address this, we must promote education around consent, healthy communication, and bystander intervention. By equipping individuals and communities with these tools, we can help prevent violence before it starts and foster a culture of respect and care. Central to this campaign is the importance of amplifying the voices of survivors, especially these most vulnerable in our communities. Their experiences must be heard and acknowledged, and their stories should guide our efforts to combat sexual violence in all its forms. Everyone in our community deserves to live in safe and supportive environments where they are treated with respect. When our workplaces, schools, and communities work together to uphold safety and respect, we make progress in preventing sexual abuse, assault, and harassment. In the city of Smithville, in recognition of the important work done by survivors and victim service providers, I urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs sponsored by the Family Crisis Center and other community organizations to work toward the elimination of sexual violence. Statistics show, most women and men who experienced contact sexual violence reported that the person who harmed them was someone they knew. Over 53% of women and over 29% of men reported experiencing contact sexual violence. One in five male victims reported only male perpetrators. One in two had only female perpetrators, and about one in six had both male and female perpetrators. More than one in four non-Hispanic black women, 29%, in the United States were raped in their lifetime. One in three Hispanic women, 34.8%, reported unwanted sexual contact in their lifetime. More than four in five American Indian and Alaska Native women, 84.3%, have experienced violence in their lifetime. 32.9% of adults with intellectual disabilities have experienced sexual violence. 47% of all transgender people have been sexually assaulted at some point in their lives. Together we act, united we change. By standing in solidarity, we can build a future free from sexual violence and create a world where everyone is safe, valued, and respected.
Now, therefore, I, Sharon Forrester, mayor of the city of Smithville, hereby join advocates and communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and each day of the year is an opportunity to create a change for the future. I think I have some people here. Would y'all please come forward? Next item is a proclamation for National Historic Preservation Month. Councilman Etheridge, would you lead us, please?
Yes, thank you. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for communities across the nation for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas Smithville was once a major passenger hub on the Missouri-Kansas-Texas Railroad, and the James H. Long Railroad Park continues to honor our unique heritage under the leadership of the Smithville Railroad Board and the Smithville Area Chamber of Commerce. And whereas the Smithville Commercial Historic District and the Smithville Residential Historic District are on the National Register of Historic Places, the Smithville Residential Historic District is a recorded Texas historic landmark, and Weston Park has an Untold Stories marker designated by the Texas Historic Commission. And whereas the Smithville Historic Preservation Design Standards Advisory Committee was established to protect the character of the historic commercial areas of Smithville, to preserve its built history, and to foster economic and community vitality while honoring and protecting the social fabric and community culture of the community. And whereas the architectural design standards were created as guidelines for rehabilitation, redevelopment, maintenance, and preservation of its existing historic structures, and providing design standards for the development of new construction projects within the Smithville Historic Commercial District. And whereas the city has established a historic marker program that encourages community members to designate their historic properties and/or significant events to recognize contributions from the past. And whereas Smithville has a longstanding history and tradition of honors, such as the first film-friendly designation, and a vibrant cultural arts district that is an officially designated cultural arts district which significantly enhances the historic fabric of our town. And whereas since 1975, the Smithville Heritage Society has worked to preserve, protect, and enrich the stories and histories of Smithville through their archival records and research, the Heritage House Museum and Archives, special events and programming, and partnerships that showcase and support the historic fabric of the community. And whereas the last day in April, April 25, 2025, is National Historic Marker Day, and the city of Smithville has four existing city markers in town and three more on the agenda today. And whereas May is National Historic Preservation Month, co-sponsored by the Smithville Heritage Society, the Smithville Historic Preservation Design Standards Advisory Committee, and the city of Smithville.
Now, therefore, I, mayor of the city of Smithville, do hereby proclaim April 25, 2025, as National Historic Marker Day, and May 2025 as Historic Preservation Awareness Month, and call upon the people of Smithville to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Thank you. Yes, B.J. Anderson tomorrow will turn to 101 on Tax Day. So, what a day. I know, and he still loves cake and ice cream, and I do too. All right. Next item. Jennifer, has anybody signed up to speak? Oh, I didn't... I was... Sorry about that. Approval of the minutes from March 10, 2025, council meeting and public hearing. Any questions? Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the March 10, 2025, council meeting and public hearing.
I second that motion.
Motion been made and seconded. All in favor. One, two. Did you raise your... It is approved. Okay, now I'm on the right one. General public comment. Anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, I have Kristin Meriwether.
Welcome.
Howdy, council. Um, back up here. Evening, mayor and council. I'm Kristin Meriwether, publisher of Smithville, Texas News. The first thing I get to do is punk myself out for printing some misinformation last month. I figured Cynthia and I talked about this before. I might as well do it in a public forum. Apparently, the chart that I had in my article last week, when I was looking at property tax total, I looked at the CAFRA reports, and I made a miscalculation. I tabulated only the utility fund portion, so I will fix that for all of you guys. And Cynthia and I will work after this meeting to get the correct information. So, that was the first part of that. Second one, I just wanted to talk about FOIA requests. I submit FOIA requests on behalf of the public, so I figured what is the good way to do it? I'm gonna tell you guys what I'm submitting here in a public forum. So, I submitted two today. The first one I submitted was for more airport data. I did that airport story, I think it was two weeks ago, might have been three, and I got quite a bit of feedback on that story. The vast majority was fairly positive. Some people did question the data that I had in the story, and believe me, I love it when my readers sold me accountable, so please call me if you see something, an error in my stories. So, the FOIA request that I submitted, or let me back up. The records that I did submit, I did request some data prior to that story being published. It was not provided by Press Time. So, the record request that I submitted today was for the formal data, which included fuel prices and sales, landing and takeoff data, and courtesy card data. So, I would appreciate that being filled in an expeditious manner. The second request that I did for this morning was about the annexation of the enclave at River Bend Land. There were some interesting comments about that last week online. After watching that hearing from June 22, I did feel there were several unanswered questions, how we got to this point. I talked about it a little bit in the newsletter last week. So, the request I made was for the internal communications. So, again, I would appreciate an expeditious, filling that in an expeditious manner. The third part that I wanted to talk about was related to a request I already submitted. I emailed all the council. I think it was this morning about that. It was related to 2025-033. I was basically FOIA-ing, submitting a request to FOIA records that had already been FOIAed, and there was some back and forth. Tracy did get back to me in between the time that I wrote this and this meeting. Some of the records have been released. I do appreciate you guys helping me on that. I do still think that because the records are already released, it does seem a little ridiculous to ask the AG. That's my personal opinion. But I do, it looks like we're working towards a solution, so if anybody said anything or made any moves to make that happen, I do appreciate that. I'll let you guys know if I need any further assistance on that. So, that's it. Thank you.
Mayor, a question of fact on that comment, for, I guess, the city manager and the city attorney. Are we processing this, or is there, as she stated, is this a request of a prior request? So, does it still have to go back to the AG's office?
Jason, I'll take this. The request of a prior request. So, each request is handled on its and of its own. This request was for information regarding economic development from particular developers, and in that request, it was asking for all correspondence. The third party, in this case, the developers, have the right to let the city either agree or disagree with the release of that information. If after a certain amount of time, they do not get back with you, then you're allowed to, it becomes truly open records regardless of what the developer wants or doesn't want. So, in this case, the initial request, they never responded, but we had to wait for them, give them the same 10 days that we were given to respond. So, as they did not respond, we were able to release that to Mr. Wilkie. Second request is gonna be handled the very same way. You have to give the developer time to respond or not respond to the request, whether or not they want you to release their potentially private information. So, that's where we are. Correct, Jason? Did I misinterpret? Or Tracy?
Yeah. Mayor, can I ask a question, maybe a little bit more succinctly? And I did have the opportunity to talk to Tracy this afternoon, and I fully appreciate the position she's in. Very specific question, Jason. If a Freedom of Information request is made for data that is exactly the same in every respect, except for the requester, do you need to get a new predetermination letter from the AG? The only thing different...
It contains somebody else's proprietary information, potentially.
If it's been released already under a predetermination letter in exactly the same format, the only thing different...
Yeah, I don't know if that's the case here, though.
Well, it is in this one. I know that's... Okay, but if it were, would you need that?
I don't know. I'd have to look at it.
Okay. I think that...
I think when you're dealing with somebody else's proprietary information, you have to be very careful.
Okay. Thank you.
So, all said and done, what is the timeline left? We're just running out the clock for them to respond?
Statement of fact is 10 days. There's two days left on the initial request. Okay? And then it goes to the AG for interpretation, or, I'm sorry, the allowance of this third party to come back and say yes or no to the proprietary information. So, there's potentially another 10-day wait on top of the two days to respond to Ms. Meriwether.
Or Tracy is. I hope I didn't say anything wrong, but that's where we are.
So, we're looking at potentially another 10 days to two weeks?
That's correct. Thank you.
Next. I have Kaylee Morgan. Welcome.
Always feel like I need a stepstool. I'm too short. My name is Kaylee Morgan. I live at 407 Gresham. Last week, my daughter accidentally broke a DVD that we borrowed from the library. We used that opportunity to explain to her accountability and coming up with resolutions to the things that we do wrong, even if it's an accident. She decided to host a Women Aid Stand and raise the money to not only replace the DVD, but also to donate a book that she picked out for the library. And now I would like to take accountability and apologize for a social media post that was made in frustration. We received a violation notice this weekend, and it really upset me, which in turn made my well-meaning but very passionate husband angry. Y'all know, Kayle. Anyways, I'm happy to announce that with the help of Louis and Robert Tamble, we have resolved the issue, and we are still open for business. And I'm thankful to live in a community where we support one another, look for ways to make our town the best together. I hope that our lemonade cake will leave a sweeter taste in your mouth about our farm stand. Come see us at 407 Gresham and see what the fuss is all about.
Is anybody else signed up to speak?
I have... Jenna Beth Ortiz is next.
Welcome. Is this on? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, mayor, council members, and everyone joining us in person and online. My name is Jenna Beth Ortiz. I'm a publisher, a book consultant, and I have a company that provide publishing and print solutions. Back in December, I did introduce a project of a children's book, and I think I'm ready to spill the beans now, even if there was a lot of speculation. So, the book is about Smitty. The title of the book is "Smitty, the Sweet Giant of Smithville." And I know that everybody knows Smitty, and that, but for me, as I was writing it, and when I was introduced by Ian and Ellen to Smitty, it's more than a fun fact, and that the story is about that. Smitty is more than a fun fact. He's bigger than that. So, you might be wondering what's next. So, the last three months, I've been assembling a creative team, and I'd like to introduce the illustrator, the lead illustrator for the project, and that's Brandy Royster. And she's supported by Jessica Wilson, that will take care of the prepress, formatting, and layout. And she's, and she's supported by Jessica Wilson that will take care of the prepress formatting and layout. Um, there's a lot of movie pieces here and a lot of other teams that I would need for the production of the book. Um, there's social media, there's marketing, there's, uh, things that we need for the ebook and the audiobook. And spoiler alert, you know, I heard that a famous and acclaimed musician here in Smithville is going to do a song or two about the book, but I will let her announce that in a later, um, later time. Um, and, um, so what's next? Um, in the next two weeks, we're actually doing a focus group. And I know I only have one minute. We're doing a focus group to ensure that, um, the story resonates with kids and that the illustrations are age-appropriate and will illustrate. And that's where Brandy comes in. And after we have the feedback, then it's all hands on deck, uh, for Brandy to bring that story to life in pages. Um, so, um, as I said, well, first of all, I'd like to say a lot of thank you. Thank you to Caroline, thank you to Kathy and the Chamber of Commerce. And there's so many people to thank because this is really a community effort for me. And as I said, Smitty is a platform. It's a way to spark creativity, celebrate local pride, and build something lasting for the community. Smithville has long been a haven for artists. Now we're building a literary community alongside it. I hope that this project is about finding that intersection of all forms of art, written word, visual storytelling, performance, and community participation. So thank you so much for letting me share. And then, you know, we'll give you updates, uh, as we go along. Thank you.
You must have practiced. You were right at your three minutes. Next, that's it. Sorry, next, oh, next. Okay. Next item on the agenda is hearing recommendations from planning and zoning and developer on the following. Welcome, Garrett.
Good evening, council. For those that don't know, my name is Garrett Kishares. I'm the, uh, chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, so we had a few items on the agenda that we had, uh, I guess it was Monday, two weeks ago. Uh, first one, 7A, and y'all should pack it on the variance request to reduce the required corner lot side yard setback from 15 feet to four feet for a property located at 1,004 Nichols Street, Riverdale Estates, Block 5, Lot 2, .46 acres, property ID 18593, owner Vicky Means. Uh, only one, uh, community member spoke out on this, uh, in favor of it. And that was, uh, one of our, uh, board, uh, members, uh, Nancy, who is the neighbor directly across. Uh, she did abstain from the vote, uh, due to the, the relationship she has with her neighbor and the, and the comments that she made. No other, no other members of the community spoke out on this. There were questions about it. Uh, you know, it is a side yard. The street that's there is not paved. Uh, probably may never be paved, I don't know. But it's not a major thoroughfare through there, coming off of that. The only person that would use that street would be, uh, Ms. Means or the owner of the house there. Um, it dead ends into state right of way and there's a pretty good drop off there. So we voted on that. Uh, like I said, Nancy abstained. It was a three to one vote. Any questions on that one? There's a picture up there for everybody to- Next one on a minor replat combining four lots-
Garrett, uh, uh, excuse me for the interruption. I've been told by some folks that have been watching this that nobody can see the screen. So I may, what do you, can I douse this light so they can see the screen online?
We have no money for working these comps.
It doesn't help. It doesn't help.
Any questions on that one?
Do you have any questions? Okay.
The next one is on minor replat combining four lots into one for 204 Ramona Street, Townsite Block 32, Lots 3, 4, 5, and 6, property ID 19526, property owners Heather and Robert Lowes. Uh, this is the property that sits between Consuela and, uh, the Frontier Bank property. Uh, they're just trying to combine those four lots into one to be able to, to do their thing there. Uh, no members of the community spoke out on it and we had a unanimous vote to approve the com, uh, the combining of those lots.
Did they state what the plans for the building would be with the-
They did not.
They did not? Okay, thank you.
The next one, item C, 7C, on a special use permit for guest house at 309 Burner Street, Roger Burn Edition, Block 110, Lot 6, property ID 16861, property owners Christie Wagner and Anna Mika Pot, Agent Fairline Architecture. The, the 7CD, E and F kind of all pertain to each other, so I'll speak on them kind of together. There was quite a bit of discussion that, that happened on this one. Uh, there were some questions about, uh, square footage and what it would add to the property and to ensure we didn't go over the, uh, maximum allowed square footage of, of impervious cover. Uh, it was determined that, that it would not. Uh, the original, the, one of the board members had an original calculation. She was adding something in there that shouldn't, should have been taken out. So, uh, we came to a, a spot on that where we were comfortable with that. Uh, we did have one member of the community speak on this. Uh, it was the neighbor that would be directly across from this project on Fourth Street. Uh, he was in favor of them and spoke highly of how well they remodeled the house that's currently there and that it would, it would add more beauty to it and that he knew that they would do an outstanding job on whatever they, whatever projects they did have. So for 7C, we voted unanimously to, uh, grant that special use permit for a guest house. On D, variance request to reduce side yard setback for the guest house from seven and a half to three foot at 309 Burner Street, Roger Burn Edition, Block 10, Lot 6, property ID 16861, property owners Christie Wagner and Anna Mika Pot, Agent Fairline Architecture. When asked, you know, why the setbacks, the, the property owner said that they were trying their best to reuse the concrete that is currently there. There is a carport and a spot where an RV is parked. Uh, you know, we, most of the discussions happened on the, on the first part. Uh, and like I said, a lot of it pertained to, uh, the square footage. When we voted on this one, we voted in a three to two vote. So it's probably, probably one of our closer votes that we've, we've had thus far. Do y'all want me to go on to the next one and then have discussion about all of it afterwards or?
You have a question?
I was wondering for the two opposed, did they state their objection?
No, not, not necessarily. I think that I can speak for it as a, one of the ones that opposed. They do own the lot next to it, but it is a separate lot, right? So to, to put something on that, they would have to combine the two lots into one. And I can understand why not wanting to do that. They do want to put a nice garden in that area and, and, and make it look really nice. Uh, I think the problem for me turns to that, you know, it is a corner lot that's right there and, and it is, puts it fairly close to the street. And we do have ordinances that we try to follow. And I know that sounds contradictory after we voted to approve the first one, but this is an actual street that gets fairly good amount of traffic on it. So that's where, where I come from.
Hey Garrett, can I ask, are there any concerns in chief rep? Cause sitting in the hall there, he might be able to weigh in. Is there any sightline issues or anything like that, given the busy street and three foot?
So 7E is a variance request to reduce the side yard setback for the carport. It was broken down into, to two different ones, uh, by request of the city. So instead of voting for the, the, uh, the apartment and the carport is one, they, they have it separate. So there's no confusion on what's being built and, and, and the setbacks for that. So it's a variance request to reduce side yard setback for the carport attached to the guest house from seven and a half to three foot, uh, at 309 Burner Street, Roger Burn Edition, Block 110, Lot 6, property ID 16861, property owners Christie Wagner and Anna Mika Pot, Agent Fairline Architecture. This too was a three to two vote. Uh, questions that were asked were, you know, about off-street parking. And if you have it that close to the street, would it allow for cars other than the ones that are parked underneath the carport? And the answer that was given was is they actually do, the architecture did say that two cars could fit stacked on top of each other and, and, and be underneath the carport. You know, kind of same reasons on that one as I gave for the, for the house reason. I believe the vote was done that way. The last one, F, on a variance request to reduce the rear yard setback for the guest house from 20 foot or 20% of the lot depth to 10 foot 6 at 309 Burner Street, Roger Burn Edition, Block 110, Lot 6, property ID 16861, property owners Christie Wagner and Anna Mika Pot, Agent Fairline Architecture. Once again, it was all discussed in the first part, uh, and this ended up with a four to one vote on that. I did vote in favor of this one, so I was not the one vote that was against.
There were no neighbors that spoke against?
No, sir. The only neighbor that spoke anything about it was, uh, the neighbor that's directly to the north across Fourth Street and he was in favor of it. He, he really enjoyed what they've done so far and says that it's beautified the neighborhood, so.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions? Any questions for Garrett? Okay, we're good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone signed up? It goes to public hearing? Is that going to public hearing or do I go back into-
No, you, you have to, public hearing.
Okay, we're in the public hearing still. First- G?
Yes.
First public hearing on annexing property described as 0.8813 acres, situated in the Louis Loma survey, abstract number 46 in Bastrop County, Texas, being a portion of a called 0.441 acre parcel one described in a deed from Robert Smith to the state of Texas executed July 31st, 2003, and recorded in volume 1373, page 188 of the Bastrop County Official Public Records, being all of a called 0.097 acres parcel two, described in a deed from Juan Mondi Enterprises Incorporated at all to the state of Texas executed July 21st, 2003, and recorded in volume 1379, page 288 of the Bastrop County Official Public Records, and being portion of a called 0.344 acres parcel three, described in a deed from Juan Mondi Enterprises Incorporated to the state of Texas executed July 21st, 2003, and recorded in a volume 1379, page 282 of the Bastrop County Official Public Records.
Okay, Mayor and Council, this is the first of two public hearings we're going to have on the annexation of this parcel of, of land. Um, it was deeded to the state of Texas and TexDOT, um, made a drainage conveyance with which we needed to purchase to complete the detention pond. So this is just following on, bringing this property into, uh, the city's city limits. And as I said, this is the first of two public hearings that we're going to have on, on the topic.
Anybody have any questions? You want to turn the lights back on so Mitch can see? Mitch, I feel like you're in the dark down there. You like it in the, okay, well, never mind then. Welcome back, Mitch. I don't- Alright. All right, any questions? Are we good there?
That pond is looking pretty good too, by the way. If you haven't been by there, the grass is already growing.
One and two thirty, yes.
Uh, they have until about October to complete the entire project, so nice progress being made.
We've got lots of-
I'm sorry, Jennifer, wow.
All right, I'm gonna close this public hearing, go back into the open me, um, open meeting? All right, guys, number A. On an ordinance for the variance request to reduce the required corner lot side yard setback from 15 feet to four foot for the property located at 1,004 Nichols Street, Riverdale Estates, Block 5, Lot 2, 0.46 acres, property ID 18593, owner Vicky Means. Any questions? Yes.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve, uh, an, a, uh, variance request to reduce the required corner lot side yard setback from 15 feet to four feet for the property located at 1,004 Nichols Street, Riverside, uh, Riverdale Estates, Block 5, Lot 2, .46 acres, property ID 18593, owner Vicky Means. Uh, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. There are special conditions affecting the applicant's property. And because of the special conditions, literal, literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. And the variance observes the spirit of the ordinance and substantial justice is done by granting the variance.
I second that emotion.
A motion's been made in second. All in favor? One, two, it's approved. Next item, B, on a minor replat combining four lots into one at 2, 204 Ramona Street, Townsite Block 32, Lots 3, 4, 5, and 6, property ID 19526, property owners Heather and Robert Lowes. Any questions?
You want a motion?
Yes.
Move, we approve the minor replat combining four lots into one for 204 Ramona Street, Townsite Block 32, Lots 3, 4, 5, and 6, ID 19526.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor? It is approved. C, on an arnits for a special use permit for a guest house at 309 Burner Street, Roger Burn Edition, Block 110, Lot 6, property ID 16861, property owners Christie Wagner and Anna Mika Pot, Agent Fairlane Architect. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we approve a special use permit for a guest house at 309 Burner Street, Roger Burn Edition, Block 110, Lot 6, property ID 16861, property owners Christie Wagner and, uh, Mr. Pot, Agent Fairline Architecture.
I second.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor? It is approved. On an ordinance for a variance request to reduce the side yard setback for a guest house that's from 7.5 feet to three feet at 309 Burner Street, Roger Burn Edition, Block 110, Lot 6, property ID 16861, property owners Christie Wagner and Ms. Pot, Agent Fairlane Architect. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion?
Okay, um, I'll make a, uh, that we approve an ordinance for a variance request to reduce the side yard setback for the guest house from seven and a half feet to three feet at 309 Burner Street, uh, Roger Ri, uh, Ryan Edition, Block 110, Lot 6, property ID 16861, property owner Christie Wagner and Ms. Pot, Agent Fairline Architecture. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest and there are special conditions affecting applicant's property. And because of the special conditions, literal, literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. And the variance observes the spirit of the ordinance and substantial justice is done by granting the variance.
I second that emotion.
Motion been made in second. All in favor? One, two. It is approved. On an ordinance for a variance request to reduce the side yard setback for the carport attached to the guest house from 7.5 feet to three feet at 309 Burner Street, Roger Burn Edition, Block 110, Lot 6, property ID 16861, property owners Christie Wagner and Ms. Pot, Agent Fairlane Architect. Any questions? Take it away, Jimmy.
I move for approval of a variance for, uh, request to reduce the side yard setback for, for the carport attached to the guest house from seven and a half feet to three feet at 309 Burner Street, Roger Burn Edition, Block 110, Lot 6-
Block one one zero, Lot six, Property ID one six eight six one.
I second that a motion.
A motion's been made in second. All in favor. One, two. It is approved. F. On an ordinance for a variance request to reduce the rear yard setback for our guest house from twenty feet or twenty percent of the lot depth or ten feet six inches at three oh nine Burn Street, Roger Byrne Edition, Block one ten Lot six, Property ID one six eight six one, Property owners Christie Wagner and Ms. Pot, Agent Fairlane Architect. Any questions? No, 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 no. Take it away, Jimmy.
I move for approval of a variance request to reduce the rear yard setback for the guest house from twenty feet to, or twenty percent of the lot depth to ten feet six inches at three oh nine Burn Street, Roger Byrne Edition, Block one ten Lot six, Property ID one six eight six one. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest, and there are no special conditions affecting the applicant's property, and because of the special conditions, literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship, and the variance observes the spirit of the ordinance, and substantial justice is done by granting the variance.
I second that a motion.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor. It is approved. Number twelve. Discussion and action on an ordinance requiring a deposit for third-party fees.
Hey, Mayor, Mayor. Mayor and Council, whenever a construction project comes through, commercial, we have a third-party engineering firm review those plans, and typically, we would send the plans, and they have an estimate as to what that was going to cost. Upon the pulling of a building or construction permit, that was when the fee is due. We got to thinking, what if this development never happens? We do not want to be stuck with a five or six thousand dollar review fee with not having come to fruition. So this ordinance will require the fees being paid upfront for the third-party review. Questions?
Robert, may I? To clarify, if it exceeds the amount of the permit, then they're reimbursed that cost at the end, correct?
Well, typically, it's just the opposite. They're gonna owe more after they get into the, in the details. So whatever the give and take will be, yes, it will be made whole one way or the other.
Any other questions? Kathy, you good? You gonna give me a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the fee schedule as City Manager just described.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor. It's approved. Lucky number thirteen. Discussion and action on equal employment opportunity plan policy.
All right, Council and Mayor, we had Mr. Rambel, Jason Rambel, go back and make one more cut at the equal opportunity policy. It was to address some minor changes and clean up some language. Jason, you have anything else you'd like to add, or it's pretty much self-explanatory?
Will you take the mic?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this came back because after we kind of reviewed it, you know, it does track with our personnel policy, but there were some, couple of sections that were required under the federal regulation that weren't as clearly addressed as I would like, so I added those in.
Ready for a motion?
I am.
I move that we approve the equal employment opportunity plan policy as amended and approved by City Attorney.
Second.
A motion's been made in second. All in favor. One, two, three, four, five. It's approved. I'm gonna adjourn the meeting. We're gonna go into a closed meeting. Executive session pursuant to Section five five one oh seven one, Texas Government Code, consultation with the attorney regarding legal issues associated with proposed public improvement district policy. We'll be right back. And we're going sixteen.
Coming back to the open meeting, calling the meeting back to order. I think we have people signed up to speak.
Yes, I have. Brandon Dunham.
Hi, Brandon. Welcome.
So admittedly, I've been pretty in favor of PIDs in the past and speaking to citizens, there definitely is a big division in the community of how this should be done. Some are completely against it, some are in favor of it if it's under control. And so I just have done some time researching and trying to see, look at others and make sure that we're looking at certain safeguards. Some of the things that I've seen is just including affordable housing and protect homeownership. Some PID policies do incentivize investor-led where they're doing mass rentals of the properties that are being developed. So making sure that we have policies in place that make it to where they are affordable to persons whose income, some of them, they don't, percentage-wise, to persons whose income is at or below median income levels with affordability enforced for 30 years. Travis County did this as well. I'll be sending this in full, but I just kind of want to go over highlights. The other element of it is making sure that you're clearly defining extraordinary public benefit. Making sure that it's not a vague term that is very specific in there, whether that is affordable housing, whether it's parks and trails, infrastructure flood control, you know, other community assets, improving the, advancing the city comprehensive plan, things like that. Fort Worth specifically called this out, said if the PID is merely funding infrastructure to a developer who normally pays for it, Fort Worth requires proof that using a PID will yield extra public value to the city as a whole, such as accelerated development or furtherance of a major city policy objective. If not, the city will not create a PID to finance the costs of construction of ordinary infrastructure. And then lastly, Travis County's policy requires a comparison chart showing how each community benefit exceeds the minimum standards required by governmental regulations, and those commitments are made binding in the PID agreement. I know the PID policy is as strong as it is, but I think there's some specific callouts that definitely should be considered. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, I have Kristin Meriwether.
All right. So since I'm going to be writing about this, I'm not going to be talking about the actual policy. I'm going to stay very on-brand today and talk about transparency. So on Monday, you guys put this draft policy on the website, which I thought was awesome. Kudos, hat tip to you guys for putting it out there. It is not required that I'm aware of to do that, and I think that it should be acknowledged that you guys put it out early. The one thing that was slightly frustrating is that it wasn't put out via notify me. You guys have talked about using notify me as a way to get, to understand what you guys are doing. I'm on every single notify me that there is. I knew about low water pressure on some area of the city that had nothing to do with me, but I didn't know, I wasn't notified about this. So I don't know why. It seems to be that the latest news section is the only thing that is not, you guys don't do push notifications on that. So I don't know if I'm allowed to make a formal request or an informal one or whatever. Anything that goes in that news section, can you guys push it out to notify me? Otherwise, the only way for me to see that is if I physically go to the website, physically scroll down there and physically happen to look at it. So I would appreciate that. Thank you.
It should be one of our notify me registers. So I'll look into it, why I didn't push it out, but it should, it should. Alerts, news flash, all of that should be pushed out.
So it's just a mechanical, we'll verify it and...
Well, thank you for pointing that out, and Jennifer, we'll look into it. Okay, so discussion and possible action on public improvement district policy as a result of the executive session. At this time, we have no action taken, but in the next two weeks, you will be notified, we're going to have a workshop. Jose will help us get the information out there that everybody can still come. We still want public input. We have a lot of things that are going on with the Public Improvement District that we need the public to come and identify for us. We have a document for everyone to read, but at this point, we still are looking for feedback from the public. So Jose.
Let me, let me address that. When we do a workshop, we have one scheduled next week for the wastewater improvements. Looking at the second or third week in May to do another PID workshop where we explain all, everything that is PID. Another opportunity for the public to learn from our investment advisors, SAMCO, and then we'll review the, what hopefully will be the final PID policy at that time. Okay, so that'll be a workshop in May. Okay?
And just to clarify, and we still won't vote at that workshop. We'll still take the feedback and we'll move it to the next opportunity to vote, because we're committed to transparency and getting as much feedback as you guys are willing to give us on this.
Lot of information. So at this time, no action taken. Number seventeen, discussion and action on South Side Pride. There you are. South Side Pride, Historical Markers for Mount Pleasant Baptist Church, Mary A. Brown Primary School, the Colorado Baptist Church, presented by Yvette. What'd she say?
These are the signs that I, it's to encourage you, to encourage you to vote.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make all of you come up here and stand in the front, because nobody can see you. I'm gonna make y'all do a parade.
I like that. That's a great idea.
All right, take it away, young lady.
Okay, oh, young, no, but okay. With the extensive packets, you no doubtably have already received and consumed with vigor. You're in receipt of lengthy and consistent emails that I'm certain you have read over and over many times, and the abundant bright flyers and posters that you've seen around town, and the gigantic digital billboard that penetrates your eyeballs on the daily. I think I'll just hit the highlights. Good evening, my name is Alta Yvette Alexander. On behalf of the South Side Smithville community, thank you all for allowing me to tell some about and update others on the Smithville South Side History Project and Culminating Unity Event. The Smithville South Side History Project is an initiative aimed at preserving the, and celebrating the rich cultural heritage of the South Side neighborhood in Smithville. This project continued to advance with remarkable community involvement and dedication. Since our initial meeting where residents, business owners, and key leaders gathered to share their stories and insights, there have been a significant push to ensure that the voices of the South Side committee, community are heard and respected. The input from these meetings has been invaluable in shaping the project and identifying landmarks for historical key landmarks that celebrate our rich heritage. From January fifteenth to today, participants have actively, actively, actively engaged in discussions, collaboratively selecting historic markers that, that really just embrace the essence of the South Side community. Two significant landmarks, Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church and Mary A. Brown, I think, Mary A. Brown Primary School. Back in the day, it was Mary Brown School, but were chosen for their cultural and historic importance alongside an inaugural honorary historic recognition for Colorado, not Colorado, Colorado Baptist Church. These selections were made collectively by those who attended the meetups, ensuring that the community's voice is central to this initiative. I am proud to say that thus far, the governing entities, the governing entity Preservation and Design Advisory Standard Committee have unanimously voted in favor of these landmarks receiving historic markers and recognition. We anticipate the same from a special call meeting of the Smithville ISD on two days from now, on April sixteenth, and respectfully request the same positive endorsement from you, Smithville City Council. And we'd like to personally invite everyone here today to mark their calendars and attend the first ever Unity Event this Saturday on April nineteenth, eleven a.m. This special occasion will feature tributes of the unveiling of the historic landmarks identified by community members, and it promises to be a heartfelt and abrasive of the South Side neighborhood. So please join us. And can I please take liberties to acknowledge the folks who have been working on this with me? Can they just come up with their signs? You can make them do the parade now, Mayor, if you want.
All right, everybody, come on, parade up here.
Don't be shy, please.
You have worked hard to get to this point. Now, you have worked hard to get to this point, so please come and share your faces.
I'm not sure why, yeah.
There we go.
Yes. And then, of course, there were major behind-the-scenes people pushing and rooting on everyone, so... And again, this is just a smothering. I would love for City Council member Jimmy to come up too. He was instrumental. Yes.
Jimmy has worked hard, but he...
He really has. Without him, a lot of things would not have been known, so, yeah.
Jimmy is a great communicator. Thank you, Jimmy. There you go.
He and Willie have been literally right and left hand.
Can we see everybody? Beautiful group. Thank you.
So I just wanted to take one more, one more thing. I'm a native Smithvillian, was born and raised here. I love this town. Trying not to get book-licked. I love this town. I'm very proud to be overseeing this event. I love Smithville, for real. Thank you.
And we love you for getting this started. Thank you.
Mayor, I do have somebody signed up to speak. I'm sorry, what?
I do have somebody signed up to speak.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
So Winnie Griffin.
Hey, Winnie.
Council, community, I want to say thank you so much for even taking the moment or the opportunity to acknowledge that there are really important pieces of history on the south side of Smithville, Texas, that have been there for an extremely long time. I would even argue longer than some things that may have already been marked with the landmarks on the north side of Smithville. Smithville Pride is real. I was born here as well. I hated it when I was younger, because I didn't see anything but flat and dry, and I was, you know, attracted to the big city. But as I get older and as I realize the value and the worth of what was established before me by the people who came before me as a sixth generation of Smithvillians, it's dawned on me that there was a lot of hard work put into everything that's taking place in the city as a whole. My family itself, if you've read about Colorado Primitive Missionary Baptist Church, which is that church right there behind y'all. My great-great-grandfather was one of the people who was leading that project, and when I was a kid, it was just a boring church that I fell asleep in most of the time. But as I got older, I realized I got to sit in the presence of what I like to think of as heaven's angels. You know, some of those really deep southern hymns, but I've also realized that it just, it wasn't just a church. You know, we look at these things, even Mount Pilgrim, even Mary A. Brown, they weren't just churches and schools. These were places that freedom colonies were based around. And for those of y'all who don't know what freedom colonies are, these are places that were established for those who were leaving out of this, the system of slavery. I have no idea what that was like, but I can only imagine what that meant for the people who were coming to Smithville, Texas, of all places. Of all places, Smithville, Texas, for freedom. That means something big, you know? So these churches, they were places for people to transition from oftentimes being treated like animals, like they weren't humans, to being treated like humans again, to have community, to have freedom, to have ownership of their own lives. That's a big deal to me. I don't understand what that life is like at all. I'm far removed from it. It's sometimes difficult to empathize, because I've been so privileged because of the work that they did when they established all these places. So just thank you, and I hope that we get to go further with Colorado Missionary Baptist Church itself, because I don't think that one, it doesn't have a designation that's going to protect it just yet. But I'm hoping that once we get everything figured out, that we can get that protected. So as Smithville continues to grow, which we know it will continue to grow, it's a place that gets to remain a critical piece of history for Smithville. So I just thank y'all for recognizing it. It's a little late, but better late than never. And I'm blessed that I get to see this happen during my lifetime and that my kids get to be here to witness it as well. So thank you, and thank you, Alta, for putting in all the hard work and making this happen and digging in and coming back and doing the work that a lot of people who've been here for a really long time didn't even do themselves. So thank you for that.
Don't ever lose your passion, young lady. Lots of passion. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion. Oh, Monica, I'm sorry, I wrote your name down, Monica. I apologize.
I'm not here as public comment, I'm here as the Chair of HPDS.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Carry on.
Hello, I'm Monica Poss. I am the chairperson of the Historic Preservation Design Standards Advisory Committee. We did recommend unanimously to approve all three of these projects. Now, we would love to have recommended to grant a historic marker at Colorado Church, but I, there were specific reasons we did not feel like we could do that, which is why we suggested an honorarium plaque that will be placed elsewhere. But I wanted to know if you guys had any questions about what the difference there was. You're good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Need a motion?
I need one, come on.
Mayor, I make a motion on the South Side Pride Historical Marker for Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church and Mary A. Brown Primary School and Colorado Baptist Church, presented by Alta Yvette Alexander.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor. It is approved. We look... And we look forward to seeing you on Saturday. It starts at eleven. All the festivities and all the smiling faces will be there. So thank you for all your hard work for everybody getting this to there. So thank you.
And Willie and I will be at the school board meeting on Wednesday to make sure that we get the final approval from the school district, and then we're all set.
There we go. Thank you, guys. Number eighteen with a guy with the bow tie. Discussion and action on the annual audit for two thousand, twenty twenty-three, what? No? Am I on the wrong one? Discussion and action on the annual audit for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal budget year? Oh, I didn't know that. I thought I called the wrong person up. Oh, I'm sorry. Guess what? I'm also watching you walk back to your seat. I apologize, I'm out of order here. Come on, girl. Sorry about that.
All right, this is the last time I'm speaking today. I know everybody's excited. Yep. So the only question I had when I was looking through it, and he may answer this, so the audit notes, we have... audit notes, we observed during the year, under audit, the city has not adhered to state purchasing requirements related to warehouse purchase product. State requires purchases over $50,000 be made through a compliant method, normally through a bid process or comparative, or cooperative, I'm sorry. This issue has been observed in the past and has been considered a technical non-compliance finding due to the dollar amount of the purchase and staff change. We have classified the issue as written recommendation rather than a finding for the year end, September 30, 2024. We recommend that the city makes all applicable purchases in a compliant manner. So the only question, I know you guys get to ask questions and are not, I'm not asking those questions for now. During the discussion, I'd like to understand what was purchased, for how much, by whom, how was that vendor selected if it wasn't done through whatever bidding process? If it's not the first time, what actions did y'all do? Like, I'm assuming somebody came in and said, hey, don't do this, but then we managed to keep doing it again? So, and I'm kind of just curious if it's the same vendor, we keep doing it again? So those are all the questions that I would have related to that. It may be asked by, by them, by the gentleman. Otherwise, it's just questions that I'd have that I would like answered at some point. So, all right.
Now we get to welcome you. Thank you.
Okay.
I was going to discuss that later in the presentation, but it is a comment, and it is a past comment, and it relates to the construction of a warehouse. Under state law, anytime you have a project that is over $50,000, you've got to get bids. Sometimes the, the construction project runs together, and a single component may be less than 50,000, so it's not bid. Then when you accumulate the entire cost of a project, it goes over 50, and then you get to listen to me. But I think there's maybe something in the future. I hear there's a bill to raise it to 100,000. And if that happens, then this won't occur. 50,000's a little small. You can do a street project that goes over 50. And so, and that's been the problem in the past. You pay with street, and you do different vendors along that street, but the total project cost 75,000. So it needed to be bid. But that's what this is about. And the reason we did it as a, not as a finding, but as a written comment, is because we don't consider, if it continues and they don't change the law, you might get a finding. But right now, it just rises to the level of a written comment that we're just going to sit and discuss amongst ourselves and give you a cautionary note. Just be aware that if you don't watch these projects, you can get, we'll come in and slap your hands. But we didn't consider this such a large problem that we needed to issue a finding, so we just did it with a written comment. I wish Jack was here, I could really get him. But anyway, this bunch that were here with the historical markers are a hard group to follow, but you can put my three minutes up now. The audit report is before you. You just got it an hour or two ago. I don't expect you to understand or be able to go through it all at one time. So what I always promise you is that if you get into it and you have a problem, you can do one of two things. You can call me directly, or I'll come back and we can discuss it in a public forum if it's that important of a comment. But inside the audit folder, you will find our opinion letter. And this is what you pay the big bucks for, and it basically comes down to, in our opinion, you're in good financial state shape, and we do not have any findings or question cost, so you have what we call an unqualified opinion. So that's what you shoot for. Now, she was talking about on the second page, well, what I wanted, fund balance in the general fund. If you look at the second page, I just want to call your attention to that because for the past 30 years, you've heard me harp about having a positive fund balance. In that, in fund balance, what we found this year, we recommend as an audit firm that you have 25% of your expenditures in undesignated fund balance. You all have 23%, so you're just 2% under. I personally recommend three months because from October to December, that's when you get the least amount of your tax revenues. So if you run out of money in October, November, or December, you better have a fund balance because you can't expend funds without a fund balance. So, and I'll go over that in just a minute, but basically, according to our standards, 25% versus 23%, not bad. I remember when you had $15,000 in the fund balance, so I'm old. But that is the opinion report. Then, I'm just going to flip through this. I got to reading through it a while ago, and I got myself confused, so I don't want to get y'all confused along with me. So I'm just going to call out some highlights for you. On page two, that required supplementary information, we don't really, we look at it, we do some procedures on it, but we don't audit it. And that, what that is, and I'm going to call your attention to it, it's your pension plans and your health plans. We don't do those reports, they come from an actuary. So we don't really, we look at it for reasonableness and compliance, but we don't express an opinion on it. And that's what that paragraph says. Over on page three, oh, five, I'm sorry. There is a summary of your financial highlights. The governmental activities, net position, remember, net position includes fixed assets and liabilities. You, you increased your net position $697,000. In the general fund, you decreased your fund balance, went down 45,000 to 1.55 million, but that's the 23% I'm talking about. So even though it went down 45,000, you're still in the range that we're looking for. And then the utility fund increased a whopping $12,000 to 5.2 million. So from a financial point of view, as long, this is as good a financial condition that I've really been, had the privilege of reporting to you. So y'all get a pat on the back. The other page I want to call your attention to is on page 19. This is the page we were talking about. On this page is a summary of your net asset position, which includes liabilities. This is what we call GASB 34. It includes the liabilities and the fixed assets. And if you look at the second page with the 19 on it, you'll look and see on the last column, about 30th way down, you'll see a negative 4.9 million. That is the amount of money that you're in the hole before you even open your doors. Okay? Are y'all going to try to get it on the screen? But you're in the hole, 4.9 million dollars before you even open your doors. So how does the city cover that 4.9 million dollars? They cover it with taxes. First off, they also cover it with the utility fund. If you look about halfway down, you'll see 1.2 million. The utility fund made money of 1.208 million. Then if you go below that, you're going to see general revenues, and that's the property taxes, the sales taxes, hotel, motel, and so on and so forth. You cover 3.6 million dollars is tax revenue. So you cover the 4.9 with the utility fund, and remember, you do transfer funds out of the utility fund into the general fund, and you cover it with taxes. So by the time you get finished with it, if you look down, you change, if you add up all of it, you actually increased your net position and your net, net assets by 709,000. Now, I told you a while ago that I like the three months expenditure rule. If you had three months' worth of expenditures, that's 1.6 million dollars. So your, your, your fund balance is almost at 1.6 million dollars, and I'll call this to your attention on another page, but just keep in mind that three months' worth of expenditures in the general fund is 1.692. Okay? Then if you look on page 26, this is the general fund operations, and you'll see that you have a fund balance of 1 million, if I can get my eyeballs right, 1,551,000, 1,551,000. I had told you that three months is 1.692. You're short about 141,000 in, in the scheme of things, that's not earth-shattering. I just wanted to caution you on, too, be aware of your fund balance. Always be aware of your fund balance during your budgetary period and during, during your operating period. Be aware that a lot of the general fund is covered by transfers out of the utility fund. And you've heard me say in the past, don't get dependent on the utility fund to balance the general fund budget. And the way you avoid getting too dependent on the general fund, or the utility fund, is that you monitor your tax rates. So keep an eye on your tax rates and your utility fund. Don't get your tax rate so low that it won't cover these operations and you've got to move money out of the utility fund. I tell every city I do that has a utility fund, be careful with that because it could jump up. Okay? Then over on page 31, this is a budgetary comparison. If you look on the expenditures, y'all were in excellent, you almost hit your budget right on out of a $6 million budget. You only all $3,500. I don't think I've ever seen that before. I don't know what Robert's doing, but you need to check out. Oh, this one, Cindy? Yeah. But do, that, that's just, I've not ever seen it that close before. And I've been doing this for 50 years. All right, beginning on page 41 is your footnotes. The only thing I want to call your attention to on the footnotes is on page 49, where you have your fixed assets, capital assets, and you moved some construction in progress. You didn't, and you had some addition, adjustments down in the capital assets, buildings, machinery. So what you're doing, you're moving it out of, you're finishing construction projects, and it comes out of construction in progress into the fixed assets. That's what this schedule shows. All right, beginning on, you want to know what that, what did I call it? The, see, I told you I can confuse myself. Required supplemental information, it really begins on page 51, defined pension plan. I, I tell you, when you go through, there are pages of these things. And there's also, beginning on page 67, even more information about the pension plans. If you get real tired at night and you can't sleep, read this footnote. Okay? It puts you to sleep in a hurry. But like I say, this footnote prepared by the actuarial, we have to report it because of the GASB 34 in 87, I think. But just take a look at that. If you have any problems with it, give me, give me a call. On page 63, there is a summary of the inter-fund transfers, transfers out of the general fund. You can see the utility fund transferred 1,245,000, if you look down at number two, from the utility fund into the general fund. The utility fund put 87,000 in interest in sinking fund. So you can see the, the utility fund is a big part of your city government. So you, you need to monitor it, you need to keep an eye on it, and not get so dependent on it that it all goes somewhere else because it does have its own problems. Like I said, on page 67, are the RSI's required supplemental information. And this measures the pension activity over the years from 2014 to 2023, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that. On page 84 and 85, are your special revenue funds, these are mainly grant funds, they're usually smaller amounts. You can look at those when you want to. You wouldn't have a hard time keeping up with me because I'm going to go fast now. On page 95 is the independent auditor's report, Board of Control of Financial Reporting Compliance. Had no, no problems with that. We looked at it, no, no, no issues, no reports there. Report on compliance and internal control for each major program as required by federal awards. This, again, the, we had no deficiency in internal control. We had, the only thing, the only thing we had was that $50,000 deal. So your grant operations, and on page 103 is a listing of your grants. And basically, no written findings. Fund balance is in good condition. It's only about 141,000 short, even with my three months' calculation. I, I, I guess I just think you're, they were talking about how much I love Smithville. I did my annual tour of the neighborhoods, and I'm very happy to report you haven't changed very much, and that's why I keep coming back. Oh, no, that's, that, this is a beautiful city, and I hate to see you become a Bastrop. I remember when Bastrop was a nice city, but when we did the audit over there. But this is a really great city to come and visit, drive the neighborhood, and look at the old houses and the great big sycamores, you know, and magnolias. I wish Lampasses had a sycamore, but they don't. We have cedars, so. But it is a, a great privilege to present this audit to the city. It's, it's a great city.
Thank you.
So if you have any, like I say, I'm always more than happy, maybe I can get rid, I have back surgery on Friday, maybe I can get back without a brace and a cane.
We welcome you back, and we'll take a stroll through Smithville.
Okay, and I, I appreciate that. Thank y'all very, very much.
Did you want to, did you have anything else you wanted to ask?
In the speaker, please. Yeah, I, I can do it. Cynthia, it was a warehouse expansion with one vendor. You have to remember, this is an aggregate also, so it just, we had an opportunity to utilize, save some money on the roof, Edward, and, and we happened to use spade and, and didn't account for what we already used spade for early in the year. So this has been a finding that we've addressed with other vendors. It, 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 it just flipped us. It's not going to happen again with spade ever, or anyone else we can, if we can keep up with it as we're supposed to, not that we didn't, we just missed that one. We're very sensitive to that fact going forward about the 50,000. And as Jack said, if it goes to 100,000, that's going to be a lot more flexibility. So it, it, it wasn't done intentional, and that's.
So Mayor, as a statement of fact, the city managers addressed the issue and won't happen again.
Correct.
Correct.
And. Speaker, Jack. Speaker, nobody hear you online.
Capital projects can involve more than just one vendor that does a job for 100,000. If it was like that, it'd be easy, but there may be four or five different vendors in there, and the total project goes out like that. Then we're required to do bids. If, sometimes you can get away with a phone bid if you document it, sometimes it has to be a formal bid. It wasn't, it wasn't enough for us to get upset about it. If Jack was here, I'd get upset with Jack.
All right. Sounds good.
And one more thing, just before we go, just statement of fact, this will be happening at the end of the, end of the meeting, when Cynthia's financial report, but our current fund balance requirement is 1.8 million. There's 2.2 in there with a surplus of 393. So we're, we're, we're doing well now, although we were short slightly, we were, we've recovered and meeting the GASB 34 requirement. This, that'd be more than 23.
Give me a motion.
You want a motion to accept the audit?
Have a motion to accept.
Do you need one?
Please.
May I move we accept the annual audit as submitted?
I second that emotion.
Motion been made in second, all in favor. One, two, three, four, five. Thank you. It's approved. No, you have to stay till the end and we're going to go on a stroll.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion and action on a resolution responding to the application of the CenterPoint Energy Resources Corporation, South Texas Division, to increase rates under the gas reliability infrastructure program, suspending the effective date of this rate application for forty-five days.
Okay, councilor and mayor, this is something that happens frequently with, with CenterPoint. And we belong to, or member of the Alliance of CenterPoint Municipalities for the South Texas Division. And we can't really control the rates, but we can suspend them for a forty-five day period. The increases are going to go into effect April nineteenth unless the council decides to suspend per resolution until June third. And they're going to raise your residential, small, commercial, and large commercial rates according to
The chart.
The chart that's there. You'll increase, actually, the residential's two dollars and eighty-eight cents a month, from twenty-five dollars to two, twenty-seven eighty-eight. And for small and large commercial respectively, it's fifty-three dollars and fourteen cent increase to two ninety-one point twenty. So what this does, approving this resolution, will suspend these rates going into effect until June third, twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Is that
I'll make a motion. I move that we postpone the IRA rate increases until June third, twenty twenty-five. Second.
Motion been made in second, all in favor. It is approved. Discussion and action on appointment, reappointment to the Smithville Hospital Authority Board. You want to talk about?
All right, mayor and council, this is a time where there are three board members on the hospital board that we appoint. And all three members have requested to continue service on the board. And they're up for your approval and authorization. Ann Fulcher, Mark Bunny, and Jimmy Trousdale for reappointment.
Give me a motion.
Mayor, I move that we accept the reappointments of Ann Fulcher, Mark Bunny, and Jimmy Trousdale to the Smithville Hospital Authority Board.
Second.
Motion been made in second, all in favor. One, two, three, approved. Discussion and action on awarding a contract for eighteen mid-sized sport utility vehicles funded by CDBG FASTROW grant contract, CFA two four oh five two four.
M O U S E.
Oh, you love it. You love it.
So councilor and mayor, this is something that the Texas Department of Agriculture came to us about seven or eight months ago to ask if we would help sponsor a program whereby they could purchase eighteen sport utility vehicles for use across, across central Texas. And if you didn't know what FAST stands for, it's, it's the Fire, Ambulance, and Service Truck Rural Outreach and Wellness ROW Program. So we agreed to take that on and, and serve as their, yes, hub for this particular grant project. And there were three sealed bids received through Byboard. And the lowest, most responsible bid came from Mack Hike Ford in Georgetown for a cost of seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven eighty-three and twenty-five cents. As they are the lowest, most responsible bidder, we're recommending that you approve awarding the contract to Mike Mack Hike Ford.
In Georgetown.
In Georgetown.
Mayor, I move approval of, I move that we award the contract for eighteen mid-sized sport utility vehicles funded by CDBG FASTROW grant contract, CFA two four oh five two four, to the lowest bidder, Mack Hike Ford.
Second.
Motion been made in second, all in favor. It's approved. Next item, number twenty-two. Discussion and possible action on a peddler and solicitor's permit.
All right, mayor and council, last city council meeting, Mr. Hawthorne came in and asked us to take a look at the, the ordinance requiring solicitors and peddlers permit for communications. After further review of this ordinance, communications by any entity are not covered under the peddler's permit statute in our, in our, in our city. Peddler's permit only applies to those people who are selling, you know, soliciting, selling, taking orders or offering to sell orders of any goods or wares. And those people do require a permit, but in this particular instance, the Church of Christ does not, as that activity is exempted from the ordinance. So you can put communication flyers out as you wish. And I've already spoken to Mr. Hawthorne, and he's appreciative of us coming to that conclusion.
And so at this point, we just need a motion?
You need action, all.
No action taken. Twenty-three, discussion and action on license agreement to encroach on city property at five oh seven River Street. Mr. Atkins, I saw you somewhere, where'd you go? You're hiding from me. Okay, come on up here.
We're going to let our code enforcement, code compliance officer.
Good evening, council. I'm here with Mr. Atkins. We've been working together on this matter for several months now. Just a little bit of history, he's here asking for a license agreement to encroach on the city property, a fence that was installed at five oh seven Rivers. Now, a little bit of history, he did go through the proper documentation. He submitted paperwork and obtained a permit. And so the fence was actually installed. It was after the fact that our building inspector actually questioned the location of it, saying that he believed that it was encroaching on our city road. And so we then began working with Mr. Atkins to see if we could identify exactly how much encroachment was involved. We asked him to please gather the property PIN information for us. And he made several attempts to do that and was not successful in being able to get the property PIN location. So we then asked him to consider doing a, a survey. And he informed us that he was not in a financial, financial position to be able to do that. So we then thought, okay, what, how do we resolve this matter? And so he is here asking permission to leave the fence as is, with the understanding that the city has the right to remove it when they deem necessary. So I don't know if you have questions for me or for Mr. Atkins at this
I don't have any questions. Do you have a question?
You want a motion?
Yes.
I move, mayor, that we approve the license agreement to encroach on the city property at five oh seven Rivers as currently described.
I second that emotion.
Motion been made in second, all in favor. It's approved. Thank you all. Number twenty-four, discussion and action on a resolution amending our master fee schedule.
Okay, mayor and council, there are some things that we needed to add to our master fee schedule. Either they were omitted inadvertently in the past, or those that need to be added because of new requirements. And those are listed here. The street naming, renaming fee was never set or codified. We do have a, a, an ordinance that addresses, you know, how you rename a street in, in the community, but that, there's a fee tied to that, and that's fifty dollars. Same, similar situation with the smart meter opt-out setup fee. That's been established and reestablished in January when we reinstituted the smart meter opt-out program. That fee is also seventy-five, is seventy-five dollars. And it just needs to be put on the master fee schedule. Commercial garbage bin, sixty-eight fifty. This is one where, last year during the budget process come, you know, what are high water, we weren't going to raise any rates. But we looked deeper into what's really happening and what the city's getting charged for a commercial ninety-six, or ninety-eight gallon cart. And we're coming up short. Commercial customers pay forty-five dollars, but waste management actually charges us sixty-eight fifty. So we're losing money to, to the tune of eighteen hundred a month for the eighty-one commercial customers, or twenty-two thousand a year. So we're just asking for you that to be raised, so we at least break even with a slight, you know, fifty cent administrative fee on top of that. So we're not losing money. The last one is the, the eight cubic yard dumpster twice a week. That wasn't even an offering that we, we had, but now there's some, there's one customer that wants that, so we're adding that to the fee schedule. For twice a week service at this particular establishment, it's five forty-eight fifty for an eight cubic yard dumpster. So those are the, oh, I'm sorry, bulk water, there's one more. We've been charging five dollars for bulk water per thousand gallons. And it seems cheaper, you know, if you don't live in the city, to get your water by bulk than paying what you guys have to pay. So we wanted to make that equitable and, and charge bulk water at, at least what we're charging base rate for citizens. So we're, we're requesting ten dollar for the bulk water.
A question for the city manager. So of these, the majority are administrative catch-ups, but there are two that are effective rate increases to make us
That's correct. The commercial garbage bin.
And the bulk water.
And the bulk water. Yeah.
I make a motion that we amend the master fee schedule as noted and explained by the city manager.
Motion been made in second, all in favor. It is approved. Discussion and action on approval of the financial report. Your turn, Cynthia.
Okay, you should have received in your packet the March financial report. Basically, we're halfway through the year. As you can see, currently our revenues are exceeding our expenditures overall. Revenues are at the eight point nine, a little over the fifty percent that's needed at this time. Expenses are pretty much right on. Again, as Robert said, we still have, you know, estimated fund balance over what we need currently. We've collected a lot of our property tax, so that might start going down as the rest of the year goes, but that's the way we typically do. So I don't know if you all have any questions on the report?
I have a couple. Robert, on the expenses for the airport, is that just a timing issue way behind the run rate? This should, our total budget's seven hundred and twenty thousand for the year, and we've spent one fifty, which is only twenty-one percent, and we're fifty percent through the year, is that just timing for fuel purchase?
That's correct. We're, we're, we're having to buy more fuel every month, which is good.
So, so we should expect probably to be buying a lot more the second six months of the year since we're behind.
Especially after the fly-in.
Yeah. So, and then I just looked, Cynthia.
Some of that, it's not necessarily important. I think part of that was the purchase, the airport hangar, if you look
Where that's in the expense?
That's the expense in the other line item. And because we didn't purchase that hangar, that's not going to be in there. So your expenses is going to be lower than what, our actual expenses for the year will be lower.
About fuel, I'm sorry.
No, I was asking if that's what, because we budgeted seven twenty, and we've only spent one fifty, which is twenty-one percent. So you're saying that we won't spend the seven twenty. We're going to end up with a big savings in that because we're not doing the hangar.
Well, we did the hangar, but it, it came to us under a reversionary clause versus having to purchase it outright.
Yeah, what's that, what's that savings going to be, you think?
That's a hundred thousand, a hundred and forty thousand, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, because we did the hangars and we didn't end up going through the actual general fund. We were able to use, wasn't it the ramp grant?
Correct.
And some of the different things. So that's why they're not in that line.
Okay.
Line item.
All right, so there's going to be a savings in that line.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, I just, I think I noticed kind of all the way universally through every one of the categories, the personnel costs are running a little bit behind where the run weights are. They're all in like the forty percent versus we're at fifty percent for the year. I was just curious, is it timing because of number of pay periods or something like that? Because it's, or are we managing our personnel costs a little bit lower across the board? Did we budget a cola that was a higher number and we didn't do it?
No, no, everything's right. Some of it is the timing of like, overturn, like police department has savings because they've lost two or three officers, and they are just now rehiring them. You had the code enforcement person that's now the part-time. So those are all
It's not a big deal. I would just maybe ask, go back and look at it, because it's, it's pretty strange and maybe a little more than just coincidence that every single personnel category is in the forties. And, you know, we should be, personnel should be fairly predictable on the run rate unless you change headcount. So just look at it, it's not a big deal. It just looks like you're saving money in personnel across the board, and it could be a timing issue. That's all I have.
Anyone else have a question? Or can I make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the financial report.
I second that emotion.
Motion been made in second, all in favor. It is approved. Before we come to the workshop on Jamboree Thursday, April twenty-fourth.
We're having it at four.
So remember, Happy Easter to everybody. Appreciate everybody hanging with us tonight, but Jamboree's twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth, please come out and support. And what other good stuff we have going.
Happy Easter.
Happy Easter, and we are adjourned.
The unity event on Saturday.
Oh, unity event on Saturday at eleven o'clock. Thank you, adjourned. Livestock show, twenty-sixth. I want my parade to. Thank you.